I'd like to call this work-study session of the White Bear Lake area schools to order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Malloy.
Here.
Chapman.
Here.
Allison.
Here.
Fahy here. Mullen.
Here.
Newmaster.
Here.
And Wilson.
Here.
Okay. We will move into our first discussion item, D1, which is the North Homes Mental Health Partnership with Birch Lake Elementary.
All right.
Is this Horn?
Yes. Good evening Chairman, all and members of the school board. Dr. Kazmicek. Tonight we'd like to give you an overview of our new partnership with North Homes Children and Family Services. Starting this year, North Homes has been providing mental health services at Birch Lake Elementary. We're really excited about this partnership because it aligns to our strategic plan, Strategy 8, which says that we will be ensuring the social and emotional growth of our students. Joining me tonight is Jill Testman, who oversees our White Bear Lake Mental Health Services in White Bear, Rachel Legales from North Homes, and Trevor Putnam, who's the School Psychologist at Birch Lake Elementary, who will be going through this presentation.
All right. Thanks Lisa. All right. Thanks for having me again. I'm Trevor Putnam. I'm School Psychologist at Birch Lake Elementary. So tonight I'm going to do a little overview of North Homes Children and Family Services and our partnership at Birch Lake, and how that fits into the social-emotional learning and mental health frameworks. So please feel free to interrupt and ask questions as we go along, but also know that I'll pause at the end for more of a discussion as well. All right. So the partnership, oops, sorry, that's my opening page there. So that's my name and title. And so the partnership is guided by the, like Lisa just said, the strategic plan, Strategy Number 8. We will ensure the social and emotional growth of our students, multi-tiered systems of support framework, which I will touch on briefly later in the presentation of kind of what that means and how it guides this partnership, and social-emotional learning best practices. So the social-emotional learning is a broad terminology for direct instruction and practice around social skills, understanding emotions. There's various curricula, school-wide expectations, and staff training on various mental health and social-emotional topics. So that includes adverse childhood experiences, trauma-informed practices, interventions and strategies for various mental health disorders and symptoms that associate with that. So I don't know if anyone's heard of the rule of 2020. So one in five kids, or 20 percent, has a diagnosable mental illness, and about 20 percent of them receive a therapy. So basically what that tells us is 80 percent of youth are receiving therapeutic services to meet their mental illness. So school is the most stable thing that kids are going to on a regular basis, so this is an excellent opportunity to meet those needs. All right. So I'll briefly touch on Alive, which is our trauma-informed school program at Birch this year. I know it's been at Willow for a few years and at Badness Heights as well this year. So that is one partnership, and of course we're going to focus on North Homes. Briefly about the Alive Misculture Program. It's a program curriculum and really a belief system to encourage kids to share their worries and struggles, and it provides staff with that ability to have those conversations with kids. And we have two counselors there who teach lessons, and that's guided through adverse childhood experiences, research, and toxic stress. So it's a lot, but it's just a really exciting thing that we have at Birch, along with North Homes, are able to catch, kind of cast a wide net of mental illness and social-emotional learning. So very exciting and meaningful and honestly really necessary partnerships at Birch this year that for student growth and successes overall. All right. So a little background about North Homes. They are based in Grand Rapids. There's locations in Duluth, Bemidji, and Deer River. They do offer a wide array of services and residential treatment, substance abuse, outpatient youth programming, day treatment. But what's highlighted and what we focus on is obviously, of course, the school-based services. So they really offer, the reason I wanted to capture everything that they offer is they offer a wide expertise as a whole around mental illness and programming and treatment options. So I know Lisa visited a site and was very impressed with the collaboration and integration with the school. So that was a huge kind of selling point for the partnership. So here are school districts that they currently partner with and the year that they started their, yep.
You visited which site?
The Grand Rapids site.
So you went to, okay.
Yeah. I talked to the principals and the teachers and kind of just wanted to see how it was integrated into the school system. Yeah.
So here are the school districts in the year that they started their partnership with, and you can see us in Blackford 2019, and Montomeda nearby as well, they started a partnership this year. So they have, they began in 2007, working with schools and on their school-based services. And they partner with 14 school districts and 37 schools in the state. 65 staff are dedicated to school-based services overall, and currently they are servicing over 900 students in the schools through this programming. So at Birch Lake Elementary, what that looks like is we have a full-time mental health professional and a full-time mental health practitioner. And I'll get into specifics of what those roles look like in a minute, but just, so we have two full-time mental health professional and practitioner who are supporting students. And what it looks like is my role, I facilitate the referrals. So that can be through problem-solving team meetings, or it can be if a parent brings up a concern, I'll talk with that parent about, you know, whether it is a mental health significant enough of a need to go ahead with the referral, and we talk through those. And I oversee consultation with classroom teachers with our providers, and it's a voluntary service that is accessed by caregivers. So they are, they need to be on board. They sign intake paper and the release of consent, private data. So they are the drivers essentially because it is a mental health service. So it's a team decision and a conversation or a request from a parent, and again, it's guided by the multi-tiered systems of support and social-emotional learning framework. So I'll touch on MTSS briefly. I don't want to get too off-track, but that's what's guiding these partnerships. So what multi-tiered systems of support is, it's an integrated approach across social, emotional, behavioral, and academic supports. It's an underlying structure that holds interventions and systems together while addressing various levels of support and need. And it's a system that focuses on interventions and the programs, not people or places. So it's not sending your kid to a place. It's what is the, yep.
Can I just, I had heard staff talking. We have had staff trained in MTSS, haven't we? Do you know approximately how many or have been trained in that?
So specifically, we took teams this summer from our elementary schools, which consisted of our principal, our school psychologist, the social worker, and usually a general education teacher, and we sent them to Northeast Metro 916 to be trained under the MTSS model for two days. And then we have a consultant that comes in, and they actually meet with those principals and that team on a monthly basis to just talk about the progression of that work and what supports that they need. Kind of an ongoing support.
I thought I had heard that we had staff trained. Thanks very much Lisa.
Thanks.
And I'm just wondering how this works with, I'm just familiar with what they've been doing, this is now the second year at Iron Lake, with their social-emotional learning with everyone and changing school climate. That's a totally different approach. Do you guys work with that, or?
Yeah, so with the, do you want to, okay. Within the framework of multi-tiered systems of support, there's tier one, or he's going to get into, do you want to throw that model?
Yeah.
So there's a tier one, tier two, and tier three. And so what you were referring to, Dr. Newmaster, is that tier one intervention that reaches all the students through the classroom model. What we're talking about today is North Homes would be that tier three intervention, so the most intensive intervention that's individualized to the specific student. So we're just trying to deepen each of the tiers within the MTSS model. So it's complementary.
It doesn't replace, it's just an additional level.
Yep. So Trevor's going to go over just how those tiers kind of fit in and where North Homes fits into that MTSS model.
Yep. So these are specific to Birch Lake, the different, so tier one, it's for all students, it's universal. So what we have is the Alive curriculum that I mentioned would fit there. Caring School Community is our social-emotional curriculum that we use. And we, I adapted Zones of Regulation to all students, which is a way to teach kids about their behavior and their emotions and a language around it, and what tools to use when they're feeling a certain way. So the social worker and I actually go into classrooms and teach that to all students. So that's a universal thing that all Birch Lake kids get. And then core values, we, is for all students, and then codes, which basically describes the volume of your voice, pretty much in different areas throughout the day, to use your voice in different ways. So tier two is specialized, and it's around 15 to 20 percent of students, and that could be a collaboration or consultation with the teacher, creating quick check-ins or interventions throughout the day, social work groups for specific skill building, pull-out breaks, mindfulness practices, and skill building like I mentioned. So then tier three, where the arrows pointing to at North Homes, that's where that would fit in. So that's a small number, intensive and individualized, usually around 3 to 5 percent of the population. And you'll, they'll get all these different interventions before getting a more intensive one, like North Homes Therapy. And, yeah.
Are these different tiers just used at the elementary level, or are they used elementary, middle, elementary, middle, high school?
Right. Our goal would be to go throughout the entire system. So this year we're starting and focusing on the elementary level, but that doesn't mean that there isn't tiers of intervention that are going on at the secondary level. We're just making a very direct approach around this, but we've already been talking about maybe expanding North Homes at the secondary level.
Yep. And just to back up, this is our behavioral multi-tiered system. So there'd be an academic one, a social-emotional one, which kind of overlaps with our behavioral. So that's specific to those needs.
And that's what I would add or offer, is this is blending the academic side, so this, this three tiers, we want to look at the whole child, we want to look at the academic side and the behavioral side and blend them together, and really have a comprehensive intervention strategy for the whole child.
What do you mean academic side?
We have, so academically tiers are, that has been part of the communication and what they've used for a long time. So that, using that terminology is already integrated into the systems across White Bear Lake. So academically, a tier one intervention, you probably can go to any teacher and ask them what those are, and they would be able to tell you what those are. Does that make sense? Did I answer your question?
I think so.
Okay.
So yeah, again, that's what the behavioral MTSS framework looks currently like now currently at Birch. And then there's just that little bubble I want to mention at the end. So if they're going through different interventions and they're done with fidelity, a sped referral, if the kid is still not, is still making inadequate educational progress, then a sped referral might be the next step, a special education referral, excuse me. Any other questions about that piece before I move on? All right. So back to the two roles of a mental health professional and mental health practitioner. So they need to be, the treatment plan is done through a diagnostic assessment, and what that looks like is observations, parent and teacher interviews, getting to know the kid and getting to know what their need is, and then they would make a mental health diagnosis if there was an evident one. So the mental health professional, they have a master's level training, they're able to diagnose, and it's more cognitive functioning, emotions, and internal processes. And typically, they're seeing a client one time a week, maybe two, depending on the intensity of the need. And the mental health practitioner, so they are doing repetitive behavioral-based teaching skills. So they're teaching skills of how to cope with stress, how to manage your anxiety, things that can be generalized into the quote-unquote "real world" instead of just that small group setting. So that's more frequent, typically three times a week. So we have those two staff providing those services based on what that diagnostic assessment resulted in. Yes?
How does this work in then with the IEPs and kids that are in special ed?
Yeah, so that's something that we're learning as we go, to be honest. And I will touch on the collaboration piece in a minute, but it's a team approach. If the student is receiving North Homes services and they also have an IEP, then they are right there, part of the table in the discussion. So I think I pretty much hit that point there, but, so they're members of the IEP meeting if they, again, it is if they are part of, or if they are receiving services and do have a diagnosis, and the parents are on board, then they will be collaborating with our IEP teams. They are there to offer crisis response and assistance, and typically that would, again, be for a student that they are receiving services for, but they are definitely integrated into our building. So if it is a significant crisis, then they, you know, they're a person with a mental health training to help out in any way they can.
One more question.
Yeah. Yes.
Can I ask, why did we decide to do this, to branch this out to Birch Lake as opposed to any other school at this point?
Right. So we started with Birch Lake just because we knew that there was a population of students there that could benefit. We have some special ed programming there for students with emotional behavior disorders. Plus just through conversation with Trevor and the principal, we just knew that there was a large need there. One of the, what, one of the reasons that we went with this model is because of the barrier to access services outside of the school day. So bringing the services into the school day helps the student be able to maintain their academic progress and their integration with the school system. And then we thought this would also, because these staff members were cohesive throughout the school day and being able to be available, that we would really be able to have the parents see them as partners in their education, and that this wasn't something that you had to go somewhere else to do. And so those were some of the reasons that we brought them into Birch Lake.
So is this more for identifying and helping the students that are not identified yet as needing these services, or are we talking students that have already been identified and have IEPs and have those services already? Like I think Birch has a cluster group, correct?
Yeah.
So I know Hugo has a cluster group, and so I know we have a need in a couple of different areas, but is this more of focusing on the needs that have not been met for the kids that maybe haven't been identified or are identified but are not, they don't have IEPs or fiber cores or any of those things yet? And what's the focus of it?
It could, it could hit either group. So whatever group is, that student has demonstrated the need and the parents have reached out to Trevor, and there's interest in that, and they want to go through and forward with the diagnostic assessment. Usually mental health facilities, you have to go somewhere to get the diagnostic assessment. It could take six to eight weeks to get that back, and then the waiting list to get into these programs is really long. And so the reason that we focused on this here for whether they're special ed or general ed is so that they could have immediate access to those services, and so they wouldn't have to leave. And so that's one of the reasons that we looked at this, is hopefully it's a precursor to not having to go into special ed evaluation if you can get your mental health needs met within your school.
Mr. Wilson.
And somewhat of a related vein to Deb's question, what factor or factors persuaded our district to partner with North Homes as opposed to another program that might be closer?
Yeah. Well, we do have partnerships. We have co-located services in all our buildings right now with a variety of different organizations that are local. The reason that we went with North Homes is because those services are provided maybe one day a week or a half day a week. And so North Homes actually provided an integrated model within the school system with the skills worker as well as the mental health practitioner, and we really felt that that skills worker aspect was really important for our students to kind of have that continuity of saying, okay, you're working on this and your mental health, with your mental health practitioner, and now you're going in the classroom and you're not taking what you learned and applying it in the classroom. So that practitioner would come alongside them and just really help emphasize those skills that they're learning. And that's why we felt that this model was the best model for our students, so that they could be within the school system.
Yep. So just to continue with that, oh, excuse me, is, we do have other agencies that are in other buildings. We're just specifically focusing on Birch.
Birch Lake.
Yeah. Yeah.
So are the, the mental health professional and the practitioner, are they actually located within Birch then?
Yep.
So that's the primary, so they're there throughout the school day. So are they on Birch Lake's, but, I mean, how, does it come out of special ed budget? I mean, how does that, how does the?
Right. So we partner with North Homes. And North Homes does some startup funding, but they're going to be, what they see this as moving toward is that once they get their client base through insurance and through some uninsured grants that we've been writing, that they'll be able to, it will just be able to, what, maintain itself. So once they get a certain client base, that covers the cost of North Homes. So we don't pay anything to them right now, and so they're just getting established into, they're a nonprofit, so they could establish. And then, like I said, we've been writing some grants to kind of cover the uninsured, underinsured, so people who have high copays, who maybe haven't been able to access mental health services in the past. These grants that we're writing will kind of help offset that cost for the family. Yes.
So if we gain the desired results here, do you see North Homes program expanding to other buildings in our district?
Yes. I think already we're hearing from other principals in other buildings that they're very interested in this model, and that's one reason we thought this was really timely to bring it to you all.
Ms. Fahy.
Can I just, and too, having been in the classroom, I see it as a good support for teachers also, if that mental health practitioner and professional are in the building to assist you with that, because that often we would, if a child was sent to a mental health diagnosis, we would fill out a form or a checklist, and often that checklist, we'd have a lot of questions, because I see this some days, I see it other days, and so I can see that meshing really well to support the teachers also, because sometimes it was very difficult to fill out all those questionnaires without having, you know, you wanted the person right there to say, well, I really can't answer this question because I see these, you know, peaks and valleys of behavior, so I see that as a real bonus.
That certainly is one of the highlights of this partnership, because they are in the buildings, full-time, all week long, not, not like a consultant going in and out. And so teachers see them, oftentimes they can go to meetings, staff meetings, and really build that relationship, so staff feel comfortable, and then capacity building heightens as well. So thanks for pointing that out.
Yeah, they're completely visible and part of our school community, so I think that makes it very helpful, and they feel comfortable, teachers feel comfortable going to them with questions when there is a shared student.
Well, and that builds the trust between staff, students, families, if they see them as part of the building climate also.
Absolutely. All right. So just to wrap up a little bit here, so our student impact, and we've touched on the piece, pieces of this as we had our discussion here. So it's intensive mental health services and treatment in the schools. So what that means is you can, more access to early diagnosis. We're breaking down those barriers of transportation for families or making it to appointments. North Homes will do home visits if that's appropriate. They will go to the home and do the intake process in the home. And that is a need at Birch Lake, so that can be diminished there. There's a multi-disciplinary team collaboration, as we mentioned, without being visible parts of our community. So, and they also offer another lens, so that perspective and collaboration on supporting students in crisis, so that in the moment, kind of being able to note observations and having a more outside lens, which is also very helpful. It's less restrictive than an off-site day treatment placement. So it's kind of another step instead of jumping to, not that it would be a jump, but it would be a, it's a big decision to recommend day treatment. And this is something that can be provided in the school to maybe offset some of those referrals. And there's also the impact on general education students with some of those internalizing behaviors and mental illnesses that are often overlooked. I think they can help support students in the schools that we know that they have maybe anxiety or depression or identity issues, but they are there to help with that. So if parents are on board, then we can get them those services right there in school. So let's see, there's user-friendly paperwork. I think that's a highlight, definitely for me and just with parents. It's very simplistic. And then once they're in the door, North Homes takes over and just really helps the process seamlessly with caregivers. And it's a continuum of service for students with mental illness. Currently we have 14 students in the process at various stages. So some have a diagnostic assessment completed, some have started groups or therapy, and others are just kind of beginning the intake process, so.
Ms. Newmaster.
It sounds, you know, like a wonderful thing, working in the school with the level that you're working at, and you talk about the continuum. I looked at all the websites for the North Home websites and things like that, and obviously I was impressed with how far away they are. So I'm thinking as you go on the continuum, kids sometimes do need day treatment or inpatient treatment. And your facilities obviously are not for people that live in the Twin Cities, so do you have partners?
Yes. So 916, Northeast Metro 916 is opening up a residential day treatment program in East Bethel, and that's who we would actually be partnering with at that point.
I'm thinking of, if you've got kids that go into a program, whether it's like the Emily program or any of them, do you have local, and I'm more familiar with high school kids that sometimes do go away sometimes and come back, is there any local connection for more intense?
I can talk a little bit about our partnerships.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that probably is separate. I think your question might be separate from North Homes, just from, I'm kind of a resource specialist in the White Bear Lake schools. And so if a student would need some services like that, our counselors, our social workers, our psychologists across the district are pretty well-connected to programs. Some of those programs may be Prairie Care, I think you mentioned, like the Emily program, that's an eating disorder program. Yeah, so that's separate from North Homes as well. There are a couple of other affiliates that we have, Northeast Family Services, that's local here. They have a day treatment. That's accessed a little bit differently. So yes, many of our workers are familiar with those programs that have specialized services, which is separate from North Homes.
Okay. So they wouldn't be replacing all of this other tier of programs?
No, 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 not right now. And in fact, we wouldn't, they, we would access services in the metro for families. We wouldn't access the North Homes programs up north. So they're coming to us, we're not going to them. Thank you.
Ms. Wilson.
I just want to say that as a parent who, of a child who struggles, and after years of diagnoses and referrals, and this is a two-parent household with cars, it was very difficult, we have regular transportation. So I really appreciate this model, and even now I'm thinking, boy, it would have been great to have something in school every day like that for him. So thank you, I appreciate this, and it would be really great to see this, because I certainly can't see our students' mental health struggles going away anytime soon. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Other questions, comments, concerns? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll now move to our second discussion item, elementary and middle school literacy update. Ms. Paul.
All right. Chair Mullen, Dr. Kazmicek, Ms. Adams, members of the board. We've got an important, important topic tonight. It's really important for you to understand as we give an update on literacy, the perspectives of the building administrators, some of the district leaders on this work, and as well as the teachers. So we have quite a group here tonight that is going to be part of the presentation, and I'm excited to get into that. And so we've really got it broken up into three parts. We're going to start with sharing the compelling why of why literacy is such an important topic for the work that we do and for the students in our district, and then we're going to get into an update on the elementary programming and then the secondary programming. Okay. I want to start with grounding us in the importance of literacy. In our literacy plan, literacy is the cornerstone of all learning and encompasses communication through understanding language in both written and spoken form. Words really matter, and the word cornerstone was chosen because of the critical importance of, of supporting the structure. And in our last work-study, Mr. Wilson shared, you know, words, you know, cornerstone is important, but a keystone is critically important because it's placed in the center of an arch, and if the keystone fails, the entire structure collapses. So I really want you to consider how, what we're talking about literacy as a keystone. It is the critical importance of maintaining a structure of learning for students so that they can really fully benefit from all of the learning that is, that they experience throughout the system. And so with that, we're going to start with strategic. with that, we're going to start with strategic adjustments that we've made for elementary literacy.
So, back in 2011, 12, we started with just establishing a literacy framework to be utilized. And then we did a study of our, and an audit of our literacy and intervention programs. In 2015, 16, that was a critical year where we established the coaching models related to literacy and technology. And really, the goal of that was that prioritizing our collaboration time, us as adults all working together and learning together. Then, of course, we know we have the district strategic plan. And with that came the site level plan. And what really has emerged from all the site levels, all of the site level plans, is the focus around academic achievement. And going back to what Ms. Paul just said about literacy being the keystone, it really is a critical component to future academic success. And so it's that natural connection for us to move forward, both in elementary and secondary, with this key literacy instructional focus and learning around literacy.
So, we decided that as a principal group, that we were going to talk with our staff about the big five. And over the summer, we met and did some PD ourselves on the big five of reading and literacy. So started with mini-book awareness, phonics comprehension, vocabulary, and fluency. And right now, at each of our sites, we are going through our PD of going into depth with each one of those different five components and really talking about what it means to teach them explicitly and systematically and using that evidence-based approach. So bringing forth the research of why it's important, how it's going to impact, you know, their learning across all subject areas, not just in reading, but in math and science and social studies. So this is really, you know, a big part of what we're doing with all of our elementary staff this year, and it's going really well. We are partnering with our curriculum leaders and our instructional coaches as well to bring this to their, you know, skill base. So that's what we are doing currently with our.
In a technological society, the demands for higher literacy are ever increasing. So as a part of Read Well by, the world's best workforce, Read Bell by third grade is an important target. And the research really supports early on that focus upon learning to read as essential.
And then transitioning to middle school, notice that we're still not doing all of one. We're definitely doing a lot more of reading to learn, but we're still continuing to learn to read, although it might be quite a bit less.
So kind of bringing it on the micro level from the macro level is that as teachers, one of the first questions we asked when we started the year was, "What was your why?" And I think they, it was asked also of our leaders, our principals. And the compelling whys about literacy have a lot to do with equity, about success, about being the foundation of all learning. And it is critical to student achievement and success. So teachers are supported and given a, you know, kind of a very connected system of professional learning that is following through, and you'll see all those connections. But the compelling why is the importance of literacy to our students. And that's where it came back to our kiddos and their success.
So I want to highlight especially that last bullet point there. Teachers deserve a connected and supportive system of professional learning. And this really became the basis for how we designed the professional learning that we are going through as an elementary team this school year and beyond. And really what this is, kind of an analogy to a stool, a three-legged stool, and how it's a sturdier format. And we really wanted to capitalize on what we view as all of our instructional leaders, between principals, we have our instructional coaches and our curriculum leaders. And what we are all trying to achieve is not only this connective and supportive system, but that we are supporting all teachers with implementing with fidelity, research-based teaching strategies and practices for literacy. Now, because we all also have our own distinct roles in this, we've laid those out, but really it's capitalizing on each one of our roles, we are spending a lot of time learning together. So within our principals' meetings, we first do some learning together. We also have instructional coaches at the meeting, and then we also go to the curriculum leaders' meetings, and we are learning together and designing professional development that is then implemented on our professional development days. But also increasing the points of contact. So we're all developing this common language and understanding around the research around reading that anytime we are working with a teacher, you know, my, part of my role is evaluation and feedback, I'm able to loop in what we've been learning about literacy there. When an instructional coach is working with a teacher on designing instruction, they can loop in what they're learning about reading research. And then as well, the curriculum leaders, as they are designing and reviewing our curriculum resources, they can have that strong connection to the literacy research as well. So it's really all about that connective and supportive system for us as an elementary team.
I'm going to turn it over to...
So, and our literacy work again is really strongly grounded in our strategic work. And so starting from the district strategic plan and then going to the building strategic plan, and now moving forward in more detail with that literacy focus. I'll talk a little bit about what does it look like in middle school? How are we attacking literacy right now? So every student has grade-level instruction in literacy. And then students who are behind grade level in their reading skills receive additional support. And so that might look like team teaching, small group support. It could also look like individual or small group direct teaching of reading skills. And then students are also taught comprehension strategies across the curriculum in other classes, not just language ours.
All right. So with that, just prioritizing the teaching of literacy and how kids learn, really important at the middle school level, we've been, again, like elementary, grounding everything in research and best practice for our teachers. A big focus on demonstration, supportive practice, really talking with teachers about how literacy is a process that happens over time. It's not something that you can go home, you can't memorize it overnight and get better. So we've used the analogy to athletics or music, that you need a lot of time and a lot of practice in order to really be able to play well. And that it needs to be continuous and ongoing. And that we're really focused on how do we tailor it to the learner. And so that we're taking it based on that ongoing assessment, formative feedback. How do we take kids where they're at and move them forward? As opposed to saying, "The whole group is here and we're going to go," really looking at it individually. With that, what is most exciting to me with the way that we're doing this is it really empowers student voice and student agency. So the students are setting goals, they're conferring with their teachers, they're talking with each other about what they've read, they're making book referrals and things like that to each other as well. Just, there's this whole culture around literacy and how we talk about literacy. We talk about reading. And so they're doing a lot of self-assessment and reflection with that. Then they're able to apply and transfer those skills to multiple texts. Aside today, some kids marking the text in one class, and it was about literacy, and they were actually creating their own codes, like a legend that you would have on a map. And each student kind of had their own marks to be able to say, "This is how I understand it," as preparing for a discussion, so that they can really engage in that academic discourse. And then there is a lot of explicit reading instruction as well. So like that previous slide said, part of what we're doing is that we are reading to learn, but it's that ongoing process that we're still also learning to read as the texts become more and more complex and we're having to apply skills at higher levels. So there are units of study, for example, maybe a deep study of character. And what is that like? And how do we unpack that in a text? With it, there are many lessons that are all grounded in the state standards. So teachers may have groups of students come and huddle up to give them some real explicit direct instruction on skills that they need to further develop. A lot of conferencing, this may be individual, one-on-one, teacher to student, or some small group conferencing with students. This allows teachers to have some formative assessment, to be able to say, "Here's what kids are understanding, what they can talk about," so that they can adjust their instruction. And it also is a great way for them to be able to differentiate. So you are not only taking kids who maybe are struggling with reading and bringing them forward, but also raising the ceiling. So kids who have been strong readers, now you're conferring with them and helping them to understand why do they know what they know? And helping them to apply and transfer that to unique situations. In addition, the students all have their own reading notebooks. And so they're logging what they've been reading, reflecting on what they've been reading, and they have something then from the beginning of the year to the end of the year, which is really essential with that process. Because it's hard to see how you've become a better reader if you're not able to actually visually go back and see where you started. So it makes it really visual for the students as well. And then there's a lot of time for guided practice. If you don't actually sit down and read, you're not a better reader. You might be a better listener or a better speaker, but they need that time to speak.
All right, well, before we open up the questions, I would really like to make sure that everybody has opportunity to say their name, what building that they're in, and what role they have. Just go ahead and speak up so that they can catch you on the mic.
Christina, I'm principal at Sunrise.
Catherine, I'm principal at Central.
Anne, I'm a teacher in learning.
Lori Moser, principal of NICA.
I'm Melissa Doll, and I'm the reading intervention teacher at Sunrise.
Carla Triggs, I'm the instructional coach at Lufen Elementary.
Rachel White, I teach seventh grade language arts at Sunrise.
Deb River, I teach second grade of the Moline.
Kami Owens, I do reading intervention at Central.
Luanna Klaja, I am the instructional coach at Madison South Country.
Katie Orr, I teach the seventh grade language arts at Central.
Jen Babbish, teaching and learning coordinator.
Cynthia Miller, principal at Our Lake.
Right. So does anybody have any questions? And if you do, targeted, we can have somebody come up from the group.
Ms. Wilson.
Yes, I realize these are very broad, generalized statements that encompass a whole variety of details. But at some point, as part of the literacy instruction, and on the more technical side, are students taught to identify the central or the main idea in what they're reading and then also identifying the supporting details for that central theme?
I'll speak to that one because that's actually a big part of what's going on right now in the elementary setting. So as we know from the Minnesota State Standards, there are some pretty big themes, and one of them is main idea and supporting details. And even more than that is what is the difference in finding main idea and supporting details in a literature type of work versus a nonfiction piece? And so students are being taught how to do both, and then even a structured format to help guide their thinking and learning about it. Yeah?
Okay, very good, thank you. Ms. Paul.
So I don't want this question to come out wrong, but I know it's going to, so I'll present it that way. So I'm looking at the timeline for this, and I'm just wondering if I'm misunderstanding. So we're starting in 2011 with establishing the literacy framework, and then we're talking eight years later that, you know, now we have this literacy focus through the RROI study and the coaching models and the district planning. So I'm assuming all along this way, we've been implementing this, these things. I just, I guess for me, I'm, was this supposed to be a beginning and an end to a phase that we were going through? Or how, how should I understand this?
I think we're an organization of continuous improvement. And so every time that we've been coming to the board to provide an update, we've elevated and learned from and made adjustments because we've got to constantly be holding a mirror back to ourselves on how we can be improving the instruction that we're providing to our students so that we can get better outcomes.
So how often do we, do we reestablish our literacy framework?
We, every year, we provide an annual update. And the literacy plan is, we update to MDE in terms of our Read Well by third grade and what kind of strategies that we're using. And so, I don't know if you want to add anything to this, but we, we're ongoing looking at the data, what it is that we're seeing in the data that can point to improvements. It's, we're ongoing making changes to make sure that we're putting improvements together. And so, for example, the ARROI study was a way that we were looking at intervention supports, which relates to the academic side of the MTSS pyramid. That was a way that we were looking at improving our literacy instruction. Through our strategic planning process, continued to show that that was a need across all of the buildings, that it is something that's a priority, something that across administrators picking up and sharing, that they want to deepen their professional learning themselves and then better find ways to embed that professional development. So it was a way to try to show you that it's been an ongoing conversation that we've had, and we're constantly looking at how we can continue to improve.
Dr. Neemaster.
I would agree that teachers are a critical factor, and you are the ones that make the difference. There's data that shows it, your strategies, the plan that's put together has made a good turn, coming back to some basics that were there before that sometimes got left behind, and added new, new tweaks to it. So we always keep doing things and adjusting it, but I still think we're missing a huge leg on the stool. When last year, all the elementary media people, the whole program was eliminated. Data, national data in 30-plus studies shows that schools that have a robust elementary media program have higher scores, not just in reading, but across all subject areas. And they found that schools that weakened or eliminated their program, they went down and stayed stagnant. It's not just across the nation, it's locally. I mean, we've had school districts that tried lowering it and budget cuts and things like that, and their scores went down. That's one reason why St. Paul schools put school libraries work. The data from 30 resources or research studies on their website. And most metropolitan school districts have an elementary media program. The media specialist is trained, you're training everyone. The elementary media specialist has a degree that requires training in literacy. They're supposed to be a facilitator and a coach, and they would have been most happy to be trained in whatever new skills were pursued. So I hope we can look at that being the next tweak as we add back a program for our kids, because right now, the media centers are empty.
Ms. Vahie.
I'd just like to thank everyone for being here. And one thing that I find really significant about this is the working, the administrators, the principals, working with the instructional coaches and the curriculum leaders. And I would hope that comments from a board member would not diminish your efforts, so you wouldn't leave here feeling that your efforts are diminished. Because I applaud you for the continual refining of this, working on it. As a former classroom teacher, this sort of program with principals, working with curriculum leaders, with instructional coaches, I just see as a good example of us working together to benefit every single student in the school. So I applaud you for your efforts. And I, we can talk about research. I know there's a lot of research on the effectiveness of instructional coaches and research on the effectiveness of coaches working with teachers, working with curriculum leaders, with administrators. So I applaud your efforts. And I hope you leave here feeling that you are recognized and we know that you're working very hard.
Thank you. I just would like to add one comment to that because these people put a lot, they're constantly thinking about the needs of our students. And I know that the middle school administrators and teachers are really thinking about that one golden resource, which is time, and really thinking thoughtfully about how we're using the time during the school day to really address the needs of the students. And so that's one thing that, to your point, they're always looking for ways to continue and improve. And that's one thing that I think has really come into a lot of conversation recently. So thank you for acknowledging that.
Ms. Wilson.
I just have a question for the, the elementary team regarding disciplinary literacy. We're talking about, you know, specifically, specifically social studies, but also science and other disciplines. How are you folding in disciplinary literacy in the work that you're doing?
I did speak to that. I mean, I think, we, oh, so sorry, I'm shy. I think that what, obviously, when you have an impact of literacy, taking a substantial amount of your literacy block, you find that in the other content areas, you bring the literacy in and you bring social studies. Just for example, in my, my literacy group, although we are focusing on obviously the reading strategies and all the things that we're doing, but with my third graders, I know they're doing geography. So part of the response and part of the bringing geopolitics and understanding, so the, you're just weaving in the content area. And it's, it's a dance, it's a fine dance, but it can be done well if you bring in the content areas that have context and meaning for the kids that we'll hook into. So that's how I'm seeing my colleagues use it, is to, is to kind of integrate the content areas. Science also is integrated.
areas, science also is integrated into our literacy and reading. When we come to use Inside Out at Willow, we do social studies as part of that science unit, that is also part of our literacy. So, we use our nonfiction texts to support the life cycle that is part of social studies and science, and we, it's just all interwoven. So, it's a fine dance, but it can be, if you step up to the, put your dance card in.
I have one comment to that. I had the opportunity to teach one hour of Minnesota history two years ago at Central. I was missing teaching, so I asked to go back in the classroom, and one thing I learned is that I'm a literacy teacher, no matter what I'm teaching. If I'm teaching math in elementary school, I'm still a literacy teacher. And our teachers are understanding that and picking up on that, and I think that has been one of the greatest gains we've had, is that we're not segmenting our core curriculum so much, and then adding our social studies and science, and making them all separate. We're able to integrate them in, which also is better for students, because they feel successful then, many more times during the day. And so, I believe our elementary teachers, and I know many of our middle and high school teachers, believe that no matter what they're teaching, they're teaching literacy.
One piece along with that, as our teachers are weaving in with literacy into the content areas, it is an expectation that as other standards are developed by the state, that it is a requirement that literacy is a part of the sciences up, and as we're unpacking the science, the expectation is that literacy is developed and found within those standards. And I would imagine when social studies comes...
Next year.
Next year, the same expectation will be there. So, that is also happening at two levels, within our teachers, but at the state level also, it's an expectation.
Great. Thank you.
Mr. Wilson.
Yeah, I'll just wholeheartedly endorse and agree with that, the last couple of statements there. In school, the, when they start studying, you know, cross relationships between different disciplines, they'll see, geez, these things are connected, you know? And that's in school, but you step out in life, and you'll get to see the, you know, relationships between the different segments and factors as you live your lives, you know? And that's just hugely important, if they can perceive those, rather than stumble blindly along through something. So, I appreciate that.
Ms. Bloy.
So, at the secondary level, so if we've identified a student that has deficiencies in different areas, what are the intervention strategies we use at the secondary level?
So, even at the secondary level, we're still really addressing those five pillars of literacy. And so, we would identify where that need is first, and then work to build up on that, on that pillar. We use lots of different programs that really just kind of key in on the student's biggest need. Our classroom teachers are doing amazing interventions right in the classroom, and our new format allows students to get more one-on-one time with teachers and in smaller groups, and so, they're getting their needs met more even in the regular classroom. And then, I work with even just that really small population of kids who need just really intense support in addition to that.
So, would that be like a pull-out type of situation?
Right. So, yeah, I work with kids on a pull-out program that kind of follows like a band lesson schedule, so they're not missing the same class every day, or the same hour every day, it rotates through.
I just have something to add to that. We've been doing some really exciting work in the middle school level, shifting our assessment practices. Shifting our assessment practices to meet sort of kids where they are. One deficiency we noticed was, we had a great arsenal of strategies, but the data we were getting from various assessment tools were not telling us what we wanted. So, this year, we're making a shift to sort of get a better assessment of kids' reading levels earlier on in the year, and to be able to see that progress, which we're really hoping, because that's, you know, part of it, you know, you have to know where they're at, to take them to where they're going to be. So, as a classroom teacher, I'm really excited about where we're moving with that assessment practice.
Who do you want to add?
I just want to say something, if you guys don't mind. You know, through this position, through my other position, I get the opportunity to talk to district administrations and school teachers across the state, and White Bear is always a leader in just so many different areas. I mean, everybody, I say, "Yeah, listen, I'm in White Bear," and they, "Oh, that's a great school district, right? They do great work." But you guys are the reason that that work's getting done. So, from the bottom of my heart, I want to thank each and every one of you for your work. With that, go Bears! Any other questions, comments?
I think we can finish with what he asked for. One, two, three.
Go Bears!
Thank you. That will go into our next discussion item, D3, which is a bond referendum update.
Ray's going to kick it off.
Yeah. So, bond referendum update, we've got, we're going to start it off with, Ms. Betty's going to show this video that was shared out. This is a 12 facts video that was...
Excuse me, please excuse me, before we get moving, I apologize. I wanted to make a brief comment before we move on, if you don't mind. This last week, I understand there was a horrible ad in the newspaper, which I was quoted in, misrepresented on a comment that I had made, and I want to make sure that everybody knows, and for the record, I'd like to know that I am very supportive of the bond, and will continue to be, will plan on voting on the 5th. I would encourage everybody to get out and vote on the 5th. It's sad to me that people would do something like that and misunderstand or misrepresent a comment that I had made. So, with that, I apologize, please continue.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mullin. So, we're going to start with a video, a 12 facts video, with some special guest stars, and I think you'll, if you haven't seen it, you'll be in for a treat here. And then, Tim's going to take it over and lead us through the presentation from there. So, I'll just hand it out to you, Tim, at this point.
12 facts every voter should know. On November 5th, voters will be asked to approve a bond referendum.
A successful bond referendum would affect all of our buildings and students.
The comprehensive plan resulted from community conversations.
The average age of district buildings are 50 years old.
A successful bond referendum would address students' needs for years to come.
For you to approve the bond referendum would result in unmet needs.
Passage of the bond referendum would increase opportunities for students.
ISD 64 is a good steward of the community investment.
Now is the time for investments.
The facilities committee discussed various high school options, and landed on the plan to expand North Campus to become the district's new single 9 through 12 high school, which would bring many benefits to the students.
The high school plan would work with existing district property.
The future is bright, a projected enrollment growth system and our strategic plan guides our work.
Don't forget to vote today, November 5th.
Go Bears!
For the mothers of our kids, eight days is all we, is all that remained before our November 5th vote. So, it's coming upon us very quickly. Dr. Kazmercek and I and others have presented to dozens of organizations over the last three and a half months. We've had great questions from folks at public meetings, and all the meetings that we've done, great one-on-one conversations, a lot of email requests for more information, and so, that's led to just tremendous community conversation. But key to this, I think worth pointing out is that we've received several key public endorsements, both the White Bear Lake Economic Development Council and the Van Nuys Heights Economic Development Council passed resolutions endorsing the referendum. They see value in the community development benefits of investing in our schools, they think this is a good decision for business owners, and so, they gave us their support. Also, we presented five different city councils, and we got great support from the city councils. Hugo City Council passed a resolution supporting and endorsing the referendum. And then, finally, the White Bear Area Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors has offered their support publicly in support of the referendum. So, this is good news. Also on this slide, just noting that the Minnesota Department of Education reviewed our plan, and we have the support of the Commissioner of Education as well. So, the district's obligation is to inform the public, and so, this is our website here, and you can see the yellow circles show many different ways you can find information on the referendum. Other district levels, or district-level efforts included print materials mailed to our district residents, print materials made available at our schools, and programs and events, articles in local and Twin Cities media, presentations to school and community groups, electronic communications to our families and staff members, and social media information shareout. So, the district website, again, I'll move on to the next slide, which shows the referendum page, is still the most complete source of information for anyone who wants to learn more about the referendum in the final eight days before the vote. So, we encourage our residents to become familiar with the details of the referendum and the comprehensive plan. Hopefully, they'll see the potential for our community in this opportunity. That's what we have for you tonight. Any questions?
Ms. Fahey.
I just want to clarify something too, and put it on the record. Referring to the ad that was in the White Bear Press, the Vote No! ad, there were four times they mentioned that we don't have a plan, a design plan in place, and it's been clearly stated at board meetings that that would be irresponsible of us to spend money on a design before we know the outcome of the vote. So, I want to state that on the record, what I just said. I will repeat myself again, because I feel like repeating myself, but I won't. But I feel that should be on the record. And it has been stated before.
I appreciate you saying that. It's important to note that in almost all cases, when school districts have referendum on the ballot, the design work follows, and so, that will happen, for sure, but as you said, we wouldn't want to spend that money on design if we didn't have the public support to move forward.
Ms. Bloy.
So, I just wanted to mention that I received a text from Mr. Solender, so we have some calling over the weekend before... Nope. Okay. Never mind. Huh? Later.
Questions, comments, concerns? Ms. Elson.
I just wanted to commend the district leadership, because I know that this is a lot of work, and it's a lot of time, and it's a lot of investment on all of your parts from all of the buildings. And so, I have a lot of hope for the vote, and just think that our kids are lucky to be in the place that they're in. So, thank you.
Other comments? Mr. Wilson.
Mr. Wall, what's your sense, as far as a trend for support of the referendum? Is it increasing? Is it kind of holding? Is it dropping?
That's hard to say. We, you know, we've had, said, had a lot of conversations, you probably have too, and there are people who have, you know, who are fully supportive of the plan, and we hear that often from people. So, we're encouraged, and there's people who have concerns, and we expect there's going to be people voting for and against this plan on November 5th. So, what we really can say is, we would just encourage everybody to please get out and vote on November 5th.
That's what we can say.
There you go.
And look at the data. The data is there. I like data. And we've collected a lot of it through demographers, and it's out there.
Other questions, comments, concerns? Okay. Thank you very much. At this point, I'd like to go to the next discussion item, which is D4, which is the negotiation study session, which will be a closed session, so I would ask us, is there a motion to go into closed session?
Mr. Chair, I move to adjourn from the workgroup meeting and proceed to the closed session.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Fahey. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We're moved to closed session.